Good evening and welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for the 21st of September 2021. If you would all please stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Kim, could you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Troutner?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Yep.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Core?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas, thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Moving on to the third item on our agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from council or staff? All right, seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Item number four is public communications. We have several items this evening. The first item under public recognition. We have a reappointment to the Public Facilities Board, to the PFD Board. That is different than the majority of our committees. It is a selection process by council. That was discussed at the first Economic and Community Development meeting last week. Greg Hafner, a local attorney, longtime Rotarian, and great community member has, was appointed to fill an unexpired term, and this appointment would be his appointment to the first full term as a member of that Public Facilities Board. So that item will be under the consent calendar. Just want to confirm that and thank you, council, for making that decision coming out of economic development and the hopeful appointment under the consent calendar. The next item on the agenda is community events. Council, any community events?
Madam Mayor, just some events to share, things that are happening around the city. On December 24th, we have the dedication for the new downtown murals. That will be at the vacant lot on Second and Meeker. We also have Coffee with the Mayor, which will be at the Senior Center on September 29th from 11:15 to 12:30. And then we have a fun pet license event that will happen at Kent Station September 30th at 5:00 p.m. A few events happening at Showware Center, you may have heard, the Kraken are coming to Showware. That is October 2nd at 7:00 p.m. We also have many Thunderbirds games. There's a country concert by Cody Johnson at 7:30 on the 16th of October. And then Disney on Ice will be at Showware from October 27th to November 1st, and tickets are available for all of those shows online. Then we also have our Spotlight Series event that will continue this fall throughout the winter. On October 9th, we have the Collision of Rhythm at the Kent Performing Arts Center, I'm sorry, the KM Performing Arts Center at 7:30. It's a tap dancing, juggling, drumming, saxophone, flute, and more kind of ensemble, so it sounds really super fun. And then on the 22nd of October, we have Luca Striccanoli, who's an Italian acoustic guitarist known for his unique style and innovative playing techniques. So lots of fun things happening for you and your family to enjoy.
All right, thank you, Council President. Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the October 9th, Saturday, there are two things going on. One, you heard about with the Spotlight Series, and the second thing is a free vaccination clinic being held just a block over at Holy Spirit Church Saturday, the 9th, 4 to 8 p.m. And they are doing both first and second vaccinations. Everyone is welcome. And then this is National Migration Week. And so on Saturday, this Saturday, also starting in the parking lot at Holy Spirit, there is going to be a walk. So at 8:30, people start gathering. About nine o'clock, there'll be a few speeches. There'll be then people taking off for, if you know where the St. Vincent de Paul Building is, down at Central and Smith, the St. Vincent de Paul Building in the back is Centro and Due. And Centro and Due is going to be there, and they will be having food at the end of that. But the purpose is so you can learn more about the plight of migrants, about asylees and refugees, and to get to know what really goes on. So two things to look forward to this Saturday.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Any other community events before we move on? All right. With that, we have, item number C on our agenda is our Public Safety Report, and joining us tonight is Chief Raphael Padilla.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the councils. My pleasure to bring you tonight's report. We have quite a bit to cover in terms of presentation, so I'll get right into it. To start us off, I want to do a life-saving award presentation, and would like to have Officer Adam Ferguson come up front, please. So Officer Ferguson's been with the department for several years. He's a veteran officer. Came to us by way of Idaho at first. And he, along with Officer Eli Morris and Officer Jacob Reed, are receiving this award tonight for some heroic efforts they did to save a man's life. Officer Reed and Officer Morris could not be here tonight, but we're honoring them publicly anyway. So let me share what happened. On July 23rd of this year, Officer Ferguson, Morris, and Jacob Reed were dispatched to a shooting at the intersection of East Russell Road and Central Avenue. They arrived and found a badly injured victim suffering from numerous gunshot wounds. It was very clear at the time that without immediate life-saving efforts, the male would have expired within minutes predominantly from bleeding out from his wounds. Three officers took immediate action, applied direct pressure to the wounds, as well as chest seals and a tourniquet to one of his arms. Effectively, what they did was they patched him up right there, got the bleeding stopped, and stabilized him long enough so that he could be transported for emergency medical care at a local hospital. I am pleased to announce that because of their efforts, the male did survive and is alive and doing well today. Officer Ferguson, Morris, and Reed are being commended for their quick actions, which saved the victim's life. And the three actions here truly embody our mission to serve with compassion. So it is my honor to bestow this award, and I should note, this is Officer Ferguson's second life-saving award since he's been with us. So please join me in congratulating him. It's about here, so this is Kent Public and City. And with that, he gets his second life-saving medal.
So the sergeant's test is when? The sergeant's test. You shut.
Congratulations.
They stood up on that half.
Thank you.
They stood up down on the other half. We blew it. You were more confident.
Congratulations. All right. Next up, we have an award of citizens commendation. And I'd like to ask Christian, and I should have asked you how to say your last name, Napper, is it Mayor, sir?
Mercer.
Mercer, please come up front here, and if you could face the screen there so we can properly embarrass you and honor you. All right. So Christian is one of three community members who are receiving this award tonight. As you can see on the screen, Holly Maseo and Imani Tuualla. We're not able to be here, but we're honoring them just the same. They were a huge part in what took place here. So let me go over what happened. On July 15th of this year, there were several witnesses who called 911 regarding a female in a restroom up at West Hamworth Park. She was screaming. There were sounds of a commotion. It was obviously there was something wrong, and so several people responded. Christian, along with others, saw a male suspect leaving the bathroom, running from the scene. They went in to check, discovered a female victim in there who had been attacked by the male. Quickly, they determined that the male had tried to force his way into the stall that she was in by kicking it open, and when that failed, tried to crawl under. Fortunately, she screamed and fought and was able to keep him at bay until they arrived. He ran. Christian, Holly, and Imani all took their, took action. They decided to get involved, and they went after the male, ran him down, and surrounded him, and kept him until police could arrive. They put themselves at personal risk because they knew it was important to help this female and help us as a police department take this violent criminal into custody and hopefully prevent future violence to other victims. Extraordinary effort, extraordinary courage, heroism, and compassion, and truly something that we have in the city that makes us very proud. And so with that, we are honoring them with the Chief's Award of Citizens Comendation, which is very much deserved, and it's heavy, so. This is being presented to you for your great action, and how you've given help, and you're very proud of the county. Thank you so much. All righty, Christian, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, start racking them up. By the way, I just want to say this. You'll hear me always say this, we're hired, so. Okay. More good news. Mayor Ralph, we get the honor of swearing in our newest officer, who just graduated from the Police Academy. I'd like to call up Officer Nicholas Lantz, please. Front and center there. He still calls me sir. You can tell he's just from the academy. I love that. That doesn't last very long. All right, so before Mayor Ralph does the honors, let me tell you a little bit about Officer Lantz here. He grew up in Bonny Lake, Washington. He's born and raised here. He went to Bonny Lake High School and while at the same time obtained his associate's degree from Pierce College through the Running Start Program. Before Kent, you guys may recognize Officer Lantz as Parking Enforcement Officer Lantz. He served in that capacity for years before deciding to do what was his ultimate goal of becoming a police officer for our department. Reason he chose Kent, this is after two years of working, he knew this was the community he wanted to serve after working in parking enforcement. Something interesting about him is he noted that he got engaged to his fiancee Jacinta shortly after beginning the academy. And so they are scheduled to get married in this upcoming November. Something else of note of him is that Officer Lantz is a legacy, what I call a legacy employee, and that his father, who currently still serves with us, is Sergeant Tim Lantz. He is one of three current legacy employees where parents have either served in the past or currently serve with the department. So very proud of that legacy. So with that, we are very pleased to have him join the KPD family. And Mayor Ralph, could you please do the honors?
This is our first council, in person, council swearing-in since the council came back. I'm excited about this. I will tell you that we miss you in parking, but are very excited. Joy, I think that's as an officer, if you could raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Nicholas Lantz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
The state of Washington.
The state of Washington.
And the city of Kent.
And the city of Kent.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will obey the rules and regulations.
And I will obey the rules and regulations.
Of the Kent Police Department.
Of the Kent Police Department.
All right, congratulations, Officer Lantz.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, well, the Lantz tribe is large tribe. But I didn't have time to introduce his family. You could, real quick. So it's my dad, Tim. Mom, if you want to raise your hand. That's my mom, Paula. And then we got my grandparents sitting next to her, Darby and Howard. Behind her in the horge is my fiancee Jacinta. And then next to her is one of my sisters, Lainey. And then the other, one of my other sisters is there in the blue, and her boyfriend, Jack.
Congratulations.
I think your signature is on that.
Yep, I'll get it. Hi. That is a great idea. You want to get a photo in there, Dad? Sergeant Lantz loves publicity and All right, thanks, guys. Congratulations. All righty, and I'm going to bring us home with another piece of what I think is a positive note for this report. I know we've got some serious things to talk about later, but I'd like to present our newest, newly released Kent PD recruiting video. Before we get turned on the video, I just want to say that this has been a long time in the making. And it's, there probably couldn't be a more important time than right now as we are rejuvenating and elevating our recruiting and hiring practices at this important time. I'm going to give special thanks to those that made the video possible, and I'm going to sound like I'm accepting an academy award. But quite frankly, the way I feel about the video is it's well-deserving of an award, and I think maybe we'll see. So the thank you start with the multimedia and communications team. They did a phenomenal job on this, Alex, Steve, Josh, Patty, and Tracy. The end result of this is incredible, as I think you will see here. I also want to thank the officers, the numerous officers who participated in the video, and the special commentary and interviews done by Sergeant Robinson, Sergeant Tong, and Officer Wilmington. They're exceptional. They're great ambassadors of our department. When you hear them speak, you will hear from their heart why they work for this great city and why they serve. And then I also want to recognize there was some, a lot of behind-the-scenes work that went into this from our hiring and recruiting team. Officer Wayne Graff, Commander Andy Grove, and Assistant Chief Kazner did a lot of behind-the-scenes coordinating to get this done. So, like I said, it sounded like an academy award acceptance speech, but there's a lot of thank yous for this great job. So with that, let's watch the video, and let's make sure we watch it all the way past the credits. There's a special thing at the end there. Kim, if you could, please. While of our mission statement, to aggressively fight crime while serving compassion is not your traditional mission statement. It really speaks to our relentless pursuit of violent criminals. We are a city that welcomes everyone. There is one exception to that. And that is if you are a violent criminal in our community, the Kent Police Department is coming to do it. For those of you out there that want to work in a high-paced, action-packed place, hence your voice.
Good enough-sized agency with different opportunities, but also small enough that I knew my coworkers and I knew the people I was working with.
My first encounter was very welcoming. I just had the sense like this is where I'm meant to be.
Yeah, it's awesome to drive cars real fast and shoot guns. Ultimately, we got on this job for one, to help people. Our department just hasn't forgotten that.
Kent is special when it comes down to how it has a family environment. You take care of your own. And I think our chief brings that here, as well as our mayor.
I draw a pretty clear distinction that we are a family and not just a team. Takes it beyond just, this is a job and we work together. And it puts us in a space where we are conscientious and mindful of our relationships with our coworkers on and off duty.
I have friends who are police officers all over the state. What are you doing? Oh, I'm going out to dinner with my squad and the families. You're doing what? You hang out with your squad mates, don't you?
No.
You see pictures from decades ago of people hanging out outside of work, and you see the next generation of young guys making memories for themselves, too. It's uplifting to see the new group of officers coming in, and they're going to calls together, and they're coming up together, and they're building those bonds.
For an agency our size to have its own training facility, I was shocked. I'd been a cop for almost five years, done firearms, and I thought I was pretty good. I found out the standards here at Kent are exceptionally high. But the investment in getting our people to be able to meet those standards is also exceptionally high.
The training here is one of the best in our region.
You have the state standard, and then we have Kent Police Standard, which is tougher than the state's. Our officers are constantly encouraged to look for that training that interests you, put in for it. And our sergeants, our first-line supervisors are excellent at encouraging people to go.
What I appreciate about the Training Division and our department is we're willing to think outside the box. Not everyone learns the same way.
Any training I've ever put in for, I've gotten. That's not generally the case in some arenas. We do good work because we are trained, and we are properly trained.
As long as someone has a good attitude and is willing to put in the work, a lot of the other things can happen with time.
I look back to when I applied here, and I looked at a couple of the local agencies in addition to Kent, and I spoke to officers that worked for those other agencies. And both of them, independent of each other, told me, if you can get on with Kent Police Department, that's the place you need to go. We are looking for the best people in our society to come in and do this job. First thing I look at is their heart. We can't train people to want to be guardians, protectors. They have to have that in their being.
Somebody that's teachable, somebody that's eager to learn. You don't have to be the best, but you're striving to do better.
If you don't fall, you're not trying hard enough. I want that person who's going to try hard, fall, make mistakes, get back up, brush themselves off, and ask, how can I do better?
Kent is going to give you the type of experience that you may have envisioned. Experience of wide variety of calls and fight legitimate crime.
It's been 20 years, and I still love this job. And it's a job that I personally couldn't see myself doing anything other.
I felt blessed, and I felt lucky to have the opportunity to be here, and I was glad that I was given that opportunity. It's not easy, but I can assure you, it's worth it. It's not about me, 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 me. It's about us, and that's the Kent PD way.
If I had to do it all over again, hell no, I'd be a firefighter. Just kidding.
All right. Well, that concludes my report, Mayor. If there's any questions, I can take those.
All right, thank you, Chief. Any questions from council? All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item number five on our agenda is reports from council and staff. It's an opportunity for It's an opportunity for all of us sitting up here to talk a little bit about the work that's being done outside of the council meetings or the regular committee meetings. It's the opportunity to talk about where we're showing up in the region, to make sure that Kent's voice is represented, and that we have a seat at those tables. I will start. It is definitely, summer hiatus is over, everyone's back in full swing for committee meetings. In the past couple of weeks, I, the Transportation Policy Board, a regional transportation board, I chair that, that group, we had a presentation on the development of the regional transportation plan. Given some data around the building of that plan, including delays in, in traffic, traffic is back up in full swing in most areas. South County didn't ever actually really slow down, but we're seeing those increases. Conversations around truck traffic, transit boarding, and then the whole plan being overlaid with an equity lens. And so the, the things that we're looking at there with that, when we have a, that coverage around equity is not, not only race, but also things like age. So where do the majority of our seniors live, and where do the majority of our youth live in the region? Also, income levels and disability. So I'm really pleased at the number of factors that are going into the development of that plan. Next meeting I have is Project Selection Task Force. I chair that group as well. We are, are developing, looking at the criteria used for projects being selected for federal funding. Kent has been very successful in these projects in the past. It's been a long process, over many, many months. We're, we're nearing the end of this Project Selection Task Force, and the last meeting, we talked about set-asides. So, that means money that is set aside specifically for preservation. Again, something that has been very, Kent has benefited from on that, in that realm. Set-asides regarding climate, bike, ped, those kinds of things. So working through that process, and once we, we finalize the criteria, we'll bring that back to the council for a report out. Next transportation meeting is South County Area Transportation Board. We had a presentation from Puget Sound Regional Council today on demographics that are happening in the region, and that also includes things like noise levels, where there's electric charging stations. We worked on the legislative agenda today, and those items were also added into that. Excited about some of the work being done by the city of Des Moines around the possibility of adding in some sort of penalty for the really loud cars. I don't know what the best way is to say that, but it's something that I know you all have heard a lot about, neighbors complaining about cars, and, and if you listen to the chief speak about this item in particular, it is illegal to have modified exhaust, but it's not illegal to sell it in the state of Washington. So it's really hard to, to curb that. And so the city of Des Moines is working on that, and has brought that to the South County Area Transportation Board for a legislative agenda item. Looking forward to how that plays out in the next session. Couple of things I was able to attend in the last few weeks. We had the grand opening of the Puget Sound Energy Charging Stations that are down here in the Sherrys parking lot, down by the golf course. Really excited that Kent is one of eight cities in the, in the region that have that, have that public charging station. Really important, especially in our large multifamily areas, right? A lot of our apartment complexes were built before charging was a thing, so making sure that our residents have access to the charging and, and the other pieces, it's really closely located to the freeway. Want to say thank you to the Afghan Health Initiative, was able to attend their vaccination event that was really reaching out to our recent and, and very newly, our new Kent residents that are Afghan refugees. The Washington State Department of Health, Dr. Shaw, continue to get his title wrong, was there. It was really exciting to be able to talk to him about what's happening around vaccinations, and then the support from the Afghan Health Initiative in getting our, our new Kent residents vaccinated. Finally, we ended Kent 101. Had a graduation last week for all of the folks that participated, participated in our online version of Kent 101. That's our civics academy. This was our third class. Want to let everyone watching know that we will be running another Kent 101 in the winter, so probably towards the end of January, and you can find signups for that in the coming months on our social media pages, as well as our website. With that, I'm going to turn to my right, and our Chief Administrative Officer, Derek Matheson.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. The mayor's office and finance department have put the finishing touches on the mayor's proposed mid-biennium budget adjustment. A little bit different this year because we also have some capital dollars to allocate, as well as our Federal American Rescue Plan Act dollars. So, we have two special meetings next Tuesday afternoon. We have a special council meeting at 4:00 PM, where the mayor will present her proposed budget adjustment, and then we have a special workshop at 4:30 PM, where our finance director will orient council to the budget document. We have two workshops scheduled in the month of October, and similar to the past, we'll invite council members to submit questions, and we'll work through those questions in the workshop. And the goal is to take the proposed adjustment and capital and ARPA investments to the Operations and Public Safety Committee earlier in November, so the council can adopt the adjustment just before Thanksgiving. So we've got a lot of budget discussions coming up here in the very near future. I also wanted to share that we've started work on our 2022 state legislative agenda. We have a contract lobbyist, and she's begun to meet with department directors. She'll put together a draft legislative agenda in conjunction with the mayor's office, and we'll present that first to the Operations and Public Safety Committee in October and November, and then bring it here to the full council for adoption. The rest of my written report is in your packet, and I'm happy to report there is no executive session this evening, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Council President Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had workshop earlier this evening. We had two great presentations. The first was on the Kent Des Moines Station, and it was around the transit-oriented development. And they are doing public engagement to get input from the community. So far, they are in Phase Two. Phase One consisted of some high-level priority engagements with the community, where they gathered support for a variety of housing types, natural spaces, and heard concerns on safety. They had 925 responses to that particular survey. Up next, beginning October 25th through November 19th, they will have Phase Two, which is going to be an online open house, and also a survey where they'll have more visuals, they'll hear community desires, and they're going to increase the radius for reaching more people, including apartments, and how they gather data for this next phase of input. And then on November 3rd, at 6:30 PM, they will have a live interpretation where they'll continue to gather information. The second presentation was on performance measures. The city's putting together a performance measures dashboard. It's going to be a really cool tool where people can go out, and there's going to be six different objectives, including diversity, inclusion, and equity. There'll be one for public safety, dependable infrastructure, economic vitality and livability, community engagement, and government accountability. And with each one of those objectives, there will be a list of, of metrics that you can pull up, and they will give you data. For example, in the diversity, inclusion, and equity, you can click on, let's say you're interested in knowing the number of diverse staff that the city has. You click on that link, it'll pull up the data, and it will tell you how many females we have in our staff, how many BIPOC employees that we have. If you look at dependable infrastructure, you can look at different projects that we have, and then you can also look at the number of potholes we filled. So lots of really great information, and right now, they're in the process of continuing to look at, are those metrics meeting what council wants to see on that dashboard? So, that tool will be launched in the first quarter of 2022. So again, really cool to see all of that information in one place where residents can take a look. We also had our Operations and Public Safety Committee meeting earlier this evening. We had our July monthly financial report, and then also a presentation from Chief Padilla on a media forensic software, which council authorized to move forward. So, it will make it easier for our officers to take cellphone data and help them as they look at solving crimes and different issues that are happening around the city. So, another tool that we've given them to hopefully make their jobs a little bit easier. I also sit on the Regional Transit Committee. We had a special meeting on September 15th, where we met with the Mobility and Environment Committee of King County, continue to have discussions on updating metro's policies, and it was a really great conversation where we got to hear from King County council members on what's happening in their districts, and the concerns, and what they're seeing as we move through and update these policy documents. So, it was really a great, great meeting. And then what's happening in Kent as far as metro goes, we just launched an on-demand service called Ride Pingo to Transit, and, I'm going to have to put up my glasses here. It's on-demand access to transit hubs and work locations in the Kent Valley and parts of the East Hill. This launched on September 14th, and it will allow people who live, work, or go to school within specific service areas. You can download this Ride Pingo app. So if you think about it, you ping your location, and then you, transit shows up and you go. So it's kind of an on-demand shared ride system. And again, you can download the Ride Pingo app for access to that really cool tool. I sit on the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee. We will meet next Thursday, the 30th. I also sit on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority with Councilmember Boyce and Councilmember Thomas. We will meet October 4th and October 20th, and I think that covers a lot. So I am going to turn to my colleagues and start with Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I serve on the Human Services Commission for the city of Kent, and we talked about something that the council's very familiar with, and that's our changes for commissions and boards and the term limits. So, Human Services Commission will be losing three members at one time, and so we discussed the, the impact that that will have, because there is a, a large learning curve for the, the role of a commissioner on that board. And then we also talked about the Equity Consultant and what was presented to council, so I won't tell you about that. We know about that. And then, on the Human Services Commission, we did this, the Equity Plan, so we're still working through all the things that the Human Services Department is looking to do to make things more equitable in the grant-making process. And they are looking at creating a racial equity assessment tool for the grant process, and then also potentially having a grant review advisory committee, so we could get more people involved in the process. And then, something fun, that doesn't have anything to do with Human Services Commission, Councilmember Larmer and I went on a tour of Mill Creek Canyon with Deputy Director Brian Levinhagen and Planner Terry Youngman, and we started up by the, kind of near target, and then we walked all the way down to the bottom. And the canyon is 1,000 times better. It was incredible that it's even the same place. I know I walked the trail about two years ago, and it was filled with trash, and carts, and all sorts of things, and it was really heartbreaking. But this time, we saw maybe like two pieces of trash. It, I mean, it was just unbelievable.
Yeah, the change was incredible.
Yeah, so the work that Clean Harbors did in the canyon is just fantastic, and then Earth Corps started working on the trail, making improvements, so that it's actually a trail that you can walk down and feel safe. So I encourage everyone to go and check it out. It's really a gym in the middle of our city. Yeah, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. I serve as the Chair for Puget Sound Cleaner Agency Advisory Council. We had our meeting on September 8th, and we had presentations on our strategic planning, wood stove loan, and air quality. We also had presentation and update on equity. And we are also recruiting for our new Executive Director for Puget Sound Cleaner Agency Advisory Council, so we had update from the HR person on that, and we should have someone by January 2022. I also serve on Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force, and that meeting was last week. We had presentation on Domestic Violence Hope Line in King County, which is a free, safe, and confidential tool. Phone number, there's a phone number, there's a toll-free phone number, and online chat, so anyone who is needing help can reach out without anyone finding out. So the phone number is 206-737-0242, or 1-877-737-0242. And for online chat, it's www.dvhopeline.org. We also had presentation on King County Sheriff's Office Language Access Project, specifically for majority of the public-facing forms. They're starting to translate that in 13 languages in King County. Also, there was a presentation on U visa, T visa, and hate crimes, and how they're dealt with at the Sheriff's Office. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Larmer.
Thank you, Council President. I sit on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and we met on the 10th, and we had a great presentation from Mark Doens from the King County Regional Homeless Authority. And I have to tell you, it was probably one of the best presentations I've heard on this topic, and sitting at a lot of regional tables. I feel like, you know, I came away kind of cautiously optimistic that we have some regional leadership that's asking the right questions to maybe really drive us towards a, a regional solution. I think we do a lot of work on our sub, on the sub-regional level, but to see kind of this, this layer of regional authority come in, will, I think, really move us forward. Because what, the topics they're talking a lot about is where, where are the gaps in service, and a lot of what falls through are what he described as high equity cases, and that's where we have plenty of response for, for a homeless male, or a homeless female, or we have services for someone with mental health issues, but it's when, it's when these start layering and intersecting, and where, what are the services, and where do you, where do you provide shelter and stuff for somebody who is mentally ill and has a drug dependency, and, you know, is, you know, a non-binary or something. So it's, I think it was an important part of the conversation, that it's these really high equity cases that they are going to be focusing on finding solutions for. We also talked a bit about the Older Americans Act funding that's going to be coming down, and that one of the key focus areas is going to be on social connectivity, and so they were talking about projects that will be funded out of that. And some of the cool ideas that I heard were not only providing just more digital devices to senior agencies and centers, but also what they're calling digital skills coaches. So providing the educational component to help our seniors get connected and be able to participate socially, and have more interaction and connection that way. Lastly, we talked about intergenerational programs are being funded out of ARPA dollars. And so there's two different RFPs opening up for agencies and centers that want to do programming that are intergenerational, and I think that's a really interesting idea of, you know, how do you blend like senior care throughout the day with daycare during the day? So it's kind of a fun idea, and I'm glad to see that those things are going to be open for funding and consideration. So. I also sit on the King County Regional Affordable Housing Committee, and we'll be meeting next week. So I'll have that report next time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. I sit on the Sound City Association PIT Committee, which is the Public Issue Committee, as Vice Chair. We haven't met for quite some time, so we pretty much did a roundtable, just kind of hear what's going on within the other 38 cities, and who was meeting and who was not meeting. So it was kind of nice, kind of get back together again. Also, we adopted a guiding principle from the RTC, and Vice Chair of the RTC, President Troutner was there, so it was nice to have PIT to adopt their guiding principle. Also, in addition to that, we have our first ECDC meeting, so it was nice to kind of get the committee back together, myself, along with Councilman Larmer and Michelle. So, we looked at what they call the Food Hut Study, and, and really, it's really trying to get people to start their own business, and they help and promote, kind of like an incubator type thing. And we had an opportunity to sample some of the goodies, and that was pretty interesting. And also, we got a little update on Amanda, which is the replacement for Kiva, along with the permit process. They're making great process, and that's really going to be a huge improvement to the permit process. So, looking forward So, uh, looking forward to that. Another thing we talked about is called small pollinators, garden, right? Which is a meadows, okay? Meadows, okay? That's kind of to help improve our ecosystem where bees and little flowers and all that stuff go around. So I think we're going to be looking for a couple of sites. I think you even mentioned a proposed site that we can look at, so I know ECDC is looking at that. So, so did I miss anything? Okay, good. That is my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Boyce. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyce, no pollinators, very little food. So pollinators are important. Mid, Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory, I had an official appointment to that. We do not meet until Thursday, day after tomorrow, so no report this time. KCD, King Conservation District, I chair that. We meet next month in October. Right now, we are in the process of going through the food system grants. So that has been a program opening, offering grants to the community, hopefully bringing in innovative ways to increase nutritionally rich food, whether it's growing it, processing it, but how do we get the food, especially grown here in King County and South King County, to market and into people? So that is, uh, what we are focusing on. Again, I'll have a report on that in October. And then for Arts Commission, I'm liaison to the Arts Commission here. And again, on Friday, this coming Friday, the twenty-fourth, three o'clock, meeting over at the corner of Meeker and Second in that vacant lot where you see that beautiful mural there. We have two new murals which are going to be dedicated. Everyone is welcome to attend that. And by now, hopefully, you have seen some of our new traffic boxes. There are thirty of them now. We are just, uh, this past week, nine more were installed. And so those, great way to help fight graffiti in the city and just adds to the beauty that we have here. So take a look at those as you're driving by. If you're wondering where they are, then there is a map that you can actually look at. Not only that, but the other public artwork in the city. There's a map of public arts, and you just go to kentarts.com, and you'll be able to find that map. Also at kentarts.com, you can find the Spotlight Series information where you can buy tickets because those tickets are now on sale. You will wear your mask and be distanced, but the concerts are taking place. There's lots of different types of, of music. There's Celtic music. The international guitar group is back. There's folk music. There's mariachi. So a variety of different types of music. And on the ninth, the dance group that is going to be there is said to be, it's a tap dance group, and it's said to be Stomp meets Blue Man Group meets Cirque du Soleil. So I am anxious to see it. In fact, I'm going with my granddaughter's. Uh, Kent Creates is, they are, have another month, so you have a little bit longer to be able to get your free-to-rome entries in. You actually have almost two and a, two and a third months, so the end of November, November thirtieth is when that cuts off. Go to kentcreates.com to find out. And when you're there, anything that you feel is artistic, let your neighbors see it. So you can post that there, and there are prizes for the top five winners. And then the Centennial Gallery, reminder that that show, that's the free gallery over here in the Centennial Building. That art exhibit, there are two artists exhibiting their work over there. That runs through the twenty-ninth of October. And if you wonder, because I've said a number of times that there's great art over there, it's free, come take a look. Look at kentarts.com and take a look for yourself, and you can get an idea of the art that's there for this show. That changes throughout the year. So come down on your lunchtime, come down on a break, just make, make a special trip. Come check it out. That's it.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone. Madam Mayor, that ends our reports.
All right, thank you. As you can tell, your council is very, very busy and hard at work. Um, I want to follow up on one of Councilmember Boyce's comments and give a shout out to a local Kent resident. Lilian is the one that supplied the Nigerian puff puff for that Economic and Community Development Meeting. Had a chance to meet her at a pop-up at Project Feast. She cooks amazing Nigerian food, and she went through the food incubator program that council was able to learn about and is now not only selling the food that she cooks, but also packaged foods are available on Amazon and other locations. So it's a huge success story and exactly the work that I know we are all invested in, in providing our residents with the skills and ability to become famous chefs and entrepreneurs. So, um, check it out. She is on Facebook. It's N-A-I-J-A Find Foods, Nia Fine Foods, or Nija Fine Foods, and it's pretty fabulous. So there's my little commercial. And thank you to her for supplying the treats to the council members at Economic and Community Development. All right, item number six on our agenda is public hearing. We do not have one this evening. Item number seven is public comment. The public comment period is the opportunity to speak to council and the mayor on issues that relate to the business of the City of Kent or agenda items the council will consider at this meeting. Comments that do not relate to the business of the City of Kent are not permitted. Additionally, I do want to remind everyone that the State of Washington prohibits people from using the public comment period to support or oppose ballot measures or candidates for office. We do have a three-minute time limit on public comment, and I would ask that when you come to the podium, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Kim, can you please call our speakers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one person signed up to speak. TJ Peterson is going to speak on tenant protections and homelessness.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, Council President, councilors. Let me start off this way. Friday, you're all familiar with the reason why, you all know me, due to the murders of my friend at the homeless camp that they were forced to live in in the woods. There's a sentencing this Friday, the twenty-fourth. A gentleman from Covington, from a very privileged family, I guess, is going to be sentenced for two first-degree murder charges. The reason they were up at that camp was because there was no safe place for them to go in Kent. I think it's, uh, the inaction in providing a shelter with services is inaction. The fact that it's been five years since my friends were murdered, that, uh, the county, Dave Up the Grove was at the Chamber of Commerce talking about the regional solutions, the regional issues. And that's what I heard for years was, this is a regional issue. We can't do nothing about this in Kent because this is bigger than us. Well, now the county is doing something. They're looking for partners. He listed off the cities that they're working with. They're working with Des Moines. They're working with Federal Way. They're working with Auburn. They're working with Renton. They're working with Aquila. They left Kent out because I guess we're going to go it on our own. So I guess it's really a regional issue that you guys don't want to be part of. Maybe I need to see some movement on that to prove different. This is kind of a big deal. I'd like to talk about the dead bodies that end up. I've been asking this question for a long time. How many people died unsheltered in Kent last year? We want to talk about metric. We want to talk about measurements. What is that number? Was there ten people that died outside unsheltered last year? Was there twenty? Was there thirty? You talk about Green Kent walking up into Mill Creek. We can't, families can't take their kids down to the river, down to Frager Road, half the parks and the trails in the city, because it seems unsafe. Because the city doesn't want to provide a shelter where people can get off the streets that would separate, that would help the police department. So a lot of police officers, their full-time job is babysitting homeless people. They don't want to do that. They don't have the tools to do that. Look at the Walking While Black, Real Kent PD Harmony video. Officer was hamstrung. Now to tenant protections. Fifteen percent of the people in King County evicted last year were in Kent. Kent produces more homeless people per capita than probably any city around here. How about some tenant protections? Give the tenants a fighting chance. I'm not asking for a moratorium on evictions. I'm asking for, pass the King County Tenant Protections. Dave Up the Grove has, represents a lot of people in this city. You know, I can't figure out who owns what apartment. Let's equal the playing field. Give them some tenant protections. I have ten seconds left. I appreciate this. This is a big issue. How many people are going to die outside this winter without a safe place to go? How many more homeless people are going to be created in Kent? The inaction that I'm seeing from the council and the mayor is inaction, and it's very telling. Kent PD, Kent Downtown Partnership, Chamber of Commerce, they're telling everybody, this homeless thing is-
You can wrap up, please.
This homeless thing is untenable. I see this as a failure of my city council, my mayor.
I need you to wrap up the time.
And I need to see-
Thank you.
Some changes maybe. Thank you.
Okay. Kim, do we have any other speakers?
I do not.
All right. Moving on in the agenda, item number eight is the Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar is a compilation of work that council has done now in the committee system. And we've got items A through C for approval. Council President, do you have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve items A through C.
Second.
I've got a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries six-zero. Item number nine is Other Business. This evening, under Other Business, we have the Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding with Kent Police Officers Association. And joining us is our human ser, our, Human Services. HR, Human Resources. I'm sorry. Our Human Resources Director, Terry Smith. Thank you, Terry, for your patience with me.
No worries. Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, Mayor, Council President, and Council Members. Tonight, um, we're here to talk about a Memorandum of Understanding. And I'd just like to acknowledge that we don't usually bring MOUs to council for review and approval. It's uncharacteristic to do so. As you may know, labor MOUs are part of a normal course. Ago May, the chief came to talk to me about, um, some growing concerns he was having related to staffing, um, his various patrol schedules. And it's important to note that they have twelve schedules that they need to staff. And chief will talk about the operational side in a minute. So this, this was drawing his attention because we've had a lot of vacancies in the department, a lot of officers have left for various reasons. He knew there were some upcoming retirements, and with the various shifts, if they had one or two unplanned absences or even planned absences, his shrinking workforce was, was getting more and more challenged to voluntarily fill these positions. And so we looked at the collective bargaining agreement and what he had available to him, knowing that we've got negotiations starting in about a month from this conversation. Let's, let's let the negotiations work its way through. Let's try and address it through negotiations. He decided in June, he had to do something, so he needed to mandatory overtime all his sworn officers. You can imagine overtime costs are very expensive. So we went through this process, brings us to August, just a month ago. Chief comes and says, this, this is not solving our issues. I really need to look at our schedules, and I need to just completely revamp the schedules. And, um, that's what brought us to the conversation about this MOU. And as you may know, a mandatory subject of bargaining, wages, hours, and working conditions. And this couldn't have been a more perfect situation. We needed to talk about new schedules, and we needed to talk about the impacts to pay relative to those schedules. We also, because of the timing, knew where we were with our market because negotiations had already commenced. We had already looked at what our comparables were doing. We knew that July, the cost of living came out, the CPI came out at six point three percent. And I'll talk a little bit more about those items. And just a reminder, they're, they're really out of our control, um, those two things. And then, um, in moving to this twelve-hour shift, um, it does trigger an opportunity for us to, uh, utilize the seven K exemption under the Fair Labor Standards Act. That exempts, um, the overtime provision, um, that is triggered in our contract when somebody works more than their scheduled shift. So those were some of the big items that got us to the point of talking about an MOU. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the chief, and he'll discuss some of the operational challenges.
It's all right. Thank you, Terry. So if you recall, back in July, on July twentieth, I had kind of a sobering presentation on the impending crisis in our staffing. Just to go through that quickly, you know, historically, high volume of voluntary retirements and resignations. We saw over a fifty percent decrease in our recruiting, so applicants were down over fifty percent. And then there's the ongoing issue, you know, the staffing per capita, and where we ranked near the bottom in that. Some of the compounding issues that have come on since that time, as we've seen officers leave, is that, uh, we also have a high number of officers out on long-term medical care right now, and the sick leave is up very high. Resulting in staffing shortages that were sustained, we were seeing, um, in August and September, we were seeing swing shifts, entire swing shifts, not arrive for work. An entire shift. And never seen that in my career, that was occurring, uh, more frequently than we, than it should, obviously. And then that led to increased wait times for calls, increased complaints for waits for call-response times, less visible presence on the streets of patrols. And then there is an issue when you don't staff sufficiently in terms of backup for the officers at the safety concern. The recent vacancies forced us to mandate overtime for all of July and August during the biggest vacation season of the year. All of our officers were mandated overtime, all of them. Overtime, other, that caused other program, uh, problems, which, you know, it erodes work-life balance for those officers and then frustrates them, right? Who aren't looking to leave, they want to stay here, but these were getting to be, um, pretty serious issues for them. So our previous schedule was based on staffing during high-time calls. So we spread out over four, or twelve, six different shifts, two sides. And we had our staffing allotted to line up with peak nine-one-one calls for service. That was hugely efficient in terms of call-response, but inefficient in terms of having a sufficient amount of numbers on at the same time. Four-ten's are very good for work-life balance. Four-ten's was one of the reasons I moved here from Hawaii. I liked that, we literally liked that. But for very serious reasons, we had to look at something different, make a significant change, and I reached the difficult decision to evoke the emergency clause of our collective bargaining agreement and do an emergency change to the schedule. So the original plan, as Terry noted, was our scheduling and our staffing that maximizes the number of officers who are on duty at the same dime. So we go from twelve spread-out shifts to four very condensed shifts. It also provides for more days off for the officers working patrol, and this is nothing new. Several agencies in the region already work twelve-hour shifts. So how does it work? We have two shifts per day, one day shift, one night shift. They work twelve hours. There is no overlap. There's an A-side and a B-side since we run twenty-four-seven, so that makes the total of four squads. The rotation of workdays is four days on, three days off. Then next week, it's three days on, four days off. And they rotate that pattern over and over again, and that goes to the seven K schedule that Terry was talking about. What they do in terms of benefits, like I said, they concentrate the squads. We now have fifteen fully-staffed squads, so four of them at any given time. That gives us a little bit of breathing room for people who are out on injury, sick leave, we have to send someone to training, and it gives us a little bit of grace so that we maintain, um, somewhere in the ballpark of twelve officers at all times. This will reduce mandatory overtime. One of the things that we're not going to do anymore is, once we reach a certain level, we are not mandating. What we're going to do is, there'll be other units pulled in from traffic and other non-p patrol units to cover. This will have a significant reduction in overtime. We don't know, it won't completely eliminate overtime, but you're going to see a significant reduction in cost savings there. For the officers, it's twenty-six additional days off a year, which is good. It's also about a hundred and four additional hours of work in the year, and that's where we come into the compensation part, what we'll be talking about here. And it, like I said, gives us more coverage. So this was a, was something that we actually looked at a few years ago. Did not make this decision easy to go to the emergency move, but I really think in terms of maintaining our level of public safety services to the community, and at the same time, trying to retain and not burn out the officers that we have here, this is a necessary move. So if there's questions on the schedule, I can answer those.
Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have discussions for the council, so we all kind of know what's going on. I do have a couple of questions follow-up. Two questions. Chief, one is, so when you do your shift change, right, so it's no overlaps, are there any crime that could happen, you know, between that time, right? Because everybody's going from one to the other.
One of the things that's going to help us mitigate, I'll speak to the mic. One of the things that's going to help us mitigate that is the take-home car program.
Okay.
Because what we will have is, while fifteen are leaving simultaneously, fifteen are starting.
Okay.
They don't have to go find cars, jump in. They come to work equipped, ready to roll. Um, and as we've talked about before, we've had several incidents where officers are taking calls on their way into work- calls on their way into work. So that will help mitigate that to some degree.
And I know you're never going to get 100%, but the officer with this year MOU, what's the morale and the thinking and the talking within the staff?
You know, I think overall, it's more positive than not. Change is scary for a lot of people. We do have a handful of officers that I'm aware of, that this is a significant change in terms of the way they've structured their daycare and home life. And I'm committed, like always, we're going to work with them and get them through this transition period the best we can.
And when does this go into effect?
October 1st is when the MOU is, if you approve, it goes into effect. And the schedule starts Sunday, October 3rd.
That's pretty quick.
If I had my way, it would have went sooner, but obviously, there's a lot of process that has to occur, not the least of which is our scheduling software.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Councilmember Michaux.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How much notice have officers had that this is potentially happening?
Let's see. We, I'm trying to give you exact dates, I don't recall them. We announced this move, my emergency order, at least two weeks ago. And it doesn't go into effect till the 3rd. So it's probably closer to three weeks ago now. We've talked, we did not say. Our collective bargaining agreement requires a 14-day notice. There's an exemption for an emergency order, which is what this is, but we wanted to give them as much time as we could.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay. I'll turn it back over to the, Terri, I'm still here if there are more.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
So as I alluded to a couple of slides ago, one of the components of the three that make up this MOU on the financial side has to do with the CPIW. And we've always used the June historical marker, so June to June. And this July is when they posted the June CPI, 6.3%. She can tell from the chart there, the last time we saw a number even remotely like that was in 2008, and it was 6.2%. And then we know what happened after that. So you can see it's a very volatile and moving measure. And in probably the last, I don't know, four or five agreements, we have begun to institute a, a minimum and a maximum. So we'll do CPI, a minimum of 1%, a maximum of 3% for, for example. And those are just off the top of my head. I don't know what they are precisely in this agreement. But that was in an attempt to try and normalize some of these big shifts. The next area that we look at, of course, is our comparable cities, so the market. And every contract bargain, we begin by reviewing the comparable cities. And those are largely based off of the, the parameters that most cities use. And it's based on your city size. And then you look at cities that are about 50% plus or minus population. And then you also look at proximity. So that's your recruiting pool. And so generally, you look at about 50 miles. Vancouver, obviously, is quite a bit south of that. But they, they really fit our demographics otherwise. So this is a pool of cities that we look at, and we look at their wages, their total comp, basically, every contract cycle. They're also in the same talent pool. So they use Puget Sound Safety, they use the same recruiting opportunities for interested folks. Those applicants go out, they put their name in, and, you know, they're one fish in a big pool of tenants trying to, or more, trying to gobble them up. One of the things that sets agencies apart from each other is the base wage. And if you've got an attractive base wage, you know, you're going to be on the watch list for these up-and-coming talented recruits and laterals. So we realize that where we like to be in the top third of our comparable cities, we have sadly fallen to the bottom. And so that's adding to the woes of trying to attract good talent to the city. And then the last component has to do with the shift differential. So I had mentioned the 7K exemption. That's actually a section in Code of Federal Regulations that is specific to law enforcement and fire protection personnel. And allows you to exempt from the FLSA exemption or overtime requirements. So right now, our, our contract requires that we pay overtime for work done outside of their shift. They have a 10-hour shift. We've actually got that written into the agreement. That was the challenge Chief and I faced in May, when he was looking at a 12-hour shift. That means we have to pay two hours of overtime for every shift that they are working. Obviously, the cost is, gets to be prohibitive. So we've looked at what it would cost one-time basis, proposed that to the unions, and it was about 4.7%. That allows us to acknowledge the 7K exemption, go to a 12-hour shift for patrol. And it also brings, equalizes and brings to parity the non-patrol shifts that are still primarily 10-hour shifts, they'll go to a 10 and a half hour shift. And that will be straight pay. So as Chief mentioned, they are going to be working 104 hours more than the usual 20, 80 a year. So. And then the other side gives you an example of some of the surrounding cities that are currently already using the 7K schedule and some of those costs. So we've got three big ticket items here within this MOU. Two of these components are out of our control, CPI and the market. The market, we figure we're about 5% outside of, of our market for comps. And then we've got the 6.3% CPI. We then add on the 4.7 for this one-time cost to get the 7K exemption. So we, as Chief mentioned, we've had several discussions with KPOA. They've acknowledged challenges with the current staffing. And they, you know, met with us, and we have reached a tentative agreement, which is in your agenda packet. And if this MOU is approved, it will essentially mean that their increase would begin October 1st of this year. They will not get any other adjustments in January of 2022. So it essentially kickstarts their increase by three months, really gets us into a competitive place for recruiting and compensates them fairly. So with that, I would entertain any questions about process or the MOU? And Chief is still here to answer questions as well.
All right. Thank you, Terri. Councilmember Michaux, followed by councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay. So they do not get overtime for working over 10 hours, but what if they do overtime over 12 hours?
They would get overtime.
Okay. And then the chief said that they get an extra 26 days off?
Because of how the schedule works with the four on, three off, three on, four off, it, it ends up being a little bit advantageous as far as the number of days off that they would have. But because they're working 12-hour shifts, they ultimately end up working 104 hours a year more.
And my last question is, do you know what the hourly, what this would bring up, the hourly rate to the bottom level?
Hard one. I have monthly rates. I don't have the hourly.
That would work.
So the monthly rate, if we go at the full cost of this MOU, it would take them to... So right now, they're at 76, 36 a month. It would take them to 88, 98 a month base wage.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Okay. So one more question. So this entire, I think it was 16% would happen in October, not just the six or 4.7?
It would be the full 16.
Okay. Thank you.
And there is, the other side of the coin, there's a cost, obviously. There's a savings. I had mentioned that the, the elimination of the extra two hours of overtime that we're paying for 12-hour shift, there's about, is it 700 or 900,000?
900,000.
So there, there are cost savings to this.
Yeah. So the, the numbers I'm referencing is that to pay this adjustment in the pay comes out to 900K. And that versus the 2.6 million overtime we've spent for the same thing.
All right. Councilmember Boyce.
That was my follow-up, excuse me, my follow-up question, really on the, so they're going to work 104 extra hours, I hear that, per officer? And that reduced the overtime pay? I don't...
So longer concentrated, it's the firefighter model. So I know you have a firefighter. They're the, they're the ones that came up with something and started the ball rolling on this. They work more hours in shifts throughout the week. So one of the weeks, they work 48 hours.
Yeah, okay.
And so that's where they start over, the course of the year, they start kicking off extra time.
Got you. Makes sense.
But they're here less often.
Yep. Then my last thing, Chief, I mean, is it possible for you to come back, maybe with three months or six months? What do you think is the appropriate time? Maybe just kind of do a report out, just see how things going? I know, what, three months, six months, what do you think would be a good timetable?
Absolutely. I, I think the first thing that I'd be excited to look at is what these three months look like in terms of our staffing ratio and overtime costs versus what they looked like last year this time.
Okay.
And then from there, I can report going forward for 2023.
That'd be good. I mean, I think it's the right thing to do, right? So, but, you know, whenever you implement something new, it takes a while to work through it, and there's kinks along the way. So I'd just be curious, just to hear how well it's going, if you don't mind.
Will do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd also be interested, just not for the past year, but because we've had the pandemic, just to make sure that everything is apples to apples, maybe the past three years, how things have gone. I spoke to an officer the other day who was an hour 14 of his shift. And so I could see also, number one, we know the stability of when people for both sides, when people are going to be assigned to work, when they're going to be able to make other plans, but also freshness of the officer. I think that's better for both sides, both for the officer and for the contacts that they make during the day, knowing that you have 12 hours. We're not going to be paying the overtime, you know? And hopefully, the 12 hours, I am concerned about not having the overlap. But we have the two 12-hour shifts, so we're getting more officer time without increasing the number of officers and saving money at the same time.
Okay. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, or actually, Terri, the, you said the monthly rate would be 88, 98 a month? Is that entry level or is that mid-level?
So that is the top step of a, a police officer. So it's not the entry level. That would also go up by 16%. But this is the top step. And I use that just for illustrative purposes because most of our officers have been here for five or more years, so most of them are there.
Okay. And that puts us in the top five again, or the top?
So at least through the end of this year, we will be number one.
Okay.
I cannot speak to what the cities around us are going to do in 2022, other than to tell you they're going to have increases. And they're going to look at us with, just, they're not going to like us with this increase.
Okay.
But we are going to be number one for a few months.
Use it while you can, Chief.
There are other cities negotiating.
Renton is in negotiations. I think Auburn will be coming into negotiations, so our neighbors are right there in the process. Councilmember Michaux.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Larmour, for clarifying that. I panicked a little bit because I pulled up Seattle's wages and then, yeah. I looked at their step one, and it was, you know, significantly less than what you were saying. So if you're saying that that is for the top step, that makes more sense. It even puts us, for now, in comparison with Seattle, so.
Our recruiting office is going to be busy.
All right. Councilmember Fincher.
So if I understand this correctly, we're putting in now the raise that we would have most likely been putting in, in when January comes around.
Once we settle the contract.
Looking at the contracts, and then we get bumped down again by our neighboring cities.
Leapfrog.
All right. Any other questions for Terri or the chief? All right. I am not seeing any. Thank you very much. Council, at this point, seeing no other questions, a motion would be in order to approve the MOU with the Kent Police Officers Association.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the City of Kent and the Kent Police Officer Association, establish a new 12-hour and 10.5-hour overtime exempt shift, and a compensation increase that accounts for the additional hours of work. A market adjustment and a cost of living adjustment, substitute final terms and condition acceptable to the HR Resource Director and the city attorney.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Motion carries six zero. That brings us to item number 10 on the agenda, which is bids. We do not have any this evening, nor do we have an executive, an executive session. Item number 12 is adjournment. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you all, and have a wonderful evening. We are adjourned.